The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. If the Secretary please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sabalski.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf is excused. John Itzel.
Here.
Bob's coming in.
Oh, there he is, okay. Bob Ostendorf is here. John Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorchevitz.
Here.
Keith Postel. Bill Pratt.
Here.
Thank you, and we have the approval of this evening's agenda. We did receive a copy from an individual who's looking into rezoning some properties. Is that individual here? Okay, are you here with him? Okay, so we're gonna move you to the end of the agenda, because I understand it could be kind of a lengthy discussion, so it would be better placed there. So with that amendment, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as amended.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And the approval of the minutes of September 16th?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the September 16 minutes as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. First item is the new business, application 2366-0920, the Margate Residential Development. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Laura Hall.
Thank you, Chairman Sabalski. Good evening, Commissioners. The application for the Margate Residential subdivision was one that you have recently reviewed as a cluster housing option. This was reviewed earlier this summer and on August 25th was subsequently considered by the Board of Trustees and approved with conditions. So as a cluster housing option, the next step is to go through the site development plan process, which we're at the tentative stage. So this evening, the applicant is requesting tentative site development plan approval. This application would need to come back to the Planning Commission for final consideration and then once again to the Board of Trustees. And I'll briefly go through some of the outstanding items as the applicant is only looking for tentative approval. The specifics on landscaping and facades are not required to be finalized at this time. And in terms of the site design and coordination, the applicant is requesting the waivers for the minimum front yard depth to 30 feet and the minimum perimeter yard to 35 feet in some cases. These waivers are consistent with other waivers that applicants have requested for similar cluster housing developments such as Brona Park, The Woods, Tuscany Reserve, and Ponce de Andover. The preservation of site features, we did recommend that additional landscaping be provided as part of this development and the applicant did agree at the Board of Trustees meeting to double provide 200% replacement trees. And that is shown on the development plan. And we had recommended that along the southern boundary, due to the concerns of residents at the public hearing, that some additional trees be located in this area or trees saved. The applicant has stated that due to some utility or stormwater in the area that this might be difficult, but I do believe they have some ideas that they'd like to share with you during their presentation on how to mitigate that. In terms of the vehicular access and circulation, the one stub street that is in the southeast portion of the site is a future potential connector if the subsequent land to the south were to be redeveloped in the future. So we're just recommending that a small sign be installed at the terminus of the street, which states it is planned for a future roadway connection. You see that commonly done in Novi and I believe South Lion, so that it's known to residents that that may happen in the future. We wanted to mention that in terms of the sidewalk connection to Isbister Elementary, the applicant is working with the township and the school district to finalize the plans for those off-site pedestrian improvements. We're having another meeting next week with the supervisor and these agreements will be finalized prior to your final consideration. Previously, the commission had discussed a point of connection to the northern portion of the site to Village Manor. We have recommended that the applicant continue to explore this possibility. They have confirmed that due to the size and location of the stormwater, that that would be a safety concern. The fire department has reviewed this plan and they have found no deficiencies in their report. In terms of the building elevation, there have, in your packet, there are some sample elevations, but these are not the final elevations that the applicant is proposing. They have committed to the 40% masonry requirement of the township ordinance and we will continue to work with them on refining those facade elevations. Of course, before you consider final approval, you will need those final elevations and the floor plans. And then lastly, the legal documents will need to be drafted and reviewed by the township attorney as part of the final consideration. So as the applicant is requesting tentative approval this evening, we do recommend that approval and that they continue to work with the township on some of these outstanding items in the next several months. Thank you.
Thank you. And the engineer report?
The applicant has worked with us quite a bit on the location of the sanitary sewer as well as the sidewalk and working on utilities outside of the roadway. We do still have a recommendation from the Department of Public Services for an additional water main loop from lot 22, either in a separate easement north of the property or in the rear lots from 20... From 23 to 30 to tie into that existing water main that goes to the north. The other thing that I wanted to mention here is that this is called out for a private road and this private road exceeds 750 feet, so technically it's supposed to go through a special approval to approve that additional length. It's about 1,100 feet total.
Where does that approval come from?
I think it technically comes from here, from the Planning Commission.
Could you say that last part again?
It's, per the township ordinance, the maximum length for a private road is 750 feet. Anything beyond 750 feet has to have a special approval.
Do you know if we're supposed to be looking for specific aspects for the length? Or, I mean, what considerations are we supposed to be giving for that?
Well, the, anything beyond 750 feet is just a cost consideration for the future. If you're part of an HOA and there's gonna be a payback on the road, it gets significantly more expensive. So I think the intent of the ordinance was to limit the length of those private roads to limit the impact on homeowner future costs.
Thank you. And as Ms. Hall said, we have the report from the fire department and they have no issues with this from a public safety perspective. And do you have a report or a presentation to give?
Yes.
So, quick question. How does a fire truck turn around?
Well, let's see. They looked at it, so I would think that if they had an issue with it, they would have told us.
I know, I thought they would.
Yeah, I talked to Dan a little bit. He'd have to make a left and sweep into that tee and then back up blind essentially into that tee to make that turnaround. It's not as ideal as a, like a roundabout or a little traffic circle.
Yeah, that tee would have been similar to what we did at the Tuscany, Walt Leonard one.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Laura, I have a question. Did we talk about interconnectivity to adjacent property? Would that come from the road that's between lots nine and 10? Where does the pumpkin patch live here?
Sorry, it would be to the south, the potential connectivity.
The nine and, between lots nine and 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you. It's a little easier to understand, people.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for your time. I know that doesn't happen too often. I actually know that because I'm a fellow planning commissioner. So at least I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you. My name is Tim Lohren. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition for Robertson Brothers Homes, 6905 Telegraph. Tonight with me is Derry Newbeck, our Senior Vice President. And last time, it would have been Jim Clark, our President, who gave the presentation. You're stuck with me tonight. Robertson is a top-five builder in the market with a 75-year history. But the last community that we built here in Plymouth was the Saddle Brook Community, Omakompa. Finished that up in about 2012, actually just west of, a little bit west of the site we're talking about tonight. So tonight, we are proposing a high-quality residential neighborhood near the intersection of Ann Arbor and the center. We did have a couple of neighborhood meetings. First one was pre-COVID and we had subsequent Zoom meeting, excuse me, Zoom meeting based on the feedback we've received at that neighborhood meeting with revisions to the plan.
Wait, could you just wait for one minute? Because that mic is not on.
Oh, okay.
Ken, I think you can hear me.
I need to get closer. Is that where it's from?
I think there's, speak again. Okay, yeah, get a little closer and then we can understand you better. Thanks.
Did you hear the part about the neighborhood meeting?
Right, right, right.
Perfect, all right. And we did receive cluster housing option approval from the board on August 25th after your recommendation in July. So if it's okay, I'd like to just go through a quick presentation and then I'd like to respond to some of the staff comments before answering any questions, if that's okay with you. Okay, so, a couple of the selling points on the project. It's 10.5 acres, 10.58 acres. We are purchasing vacant land from the Church of the Nazarene. It's a church on Ann Arbor Road to the north. The zoning is R1S, but as I mentioned, we did receive the approval for the cluster housing option. Number of homes would be 30 and the plan type is a for-sale detached single-family. Ranch and two-story colonials would be available. We are still working through the plans. This is a new plan series for us. It's actually being developed specifically for this site. As Laura had mentioned, we will be working with her as we kind of finalize those plans, but we're using your ordinances to go through that process of redesigning. 1,850 square feet to about 3,000 square feet. Let's go to the project highlights, please. So they'll be high-quality owner-occupied, family-oriented homes. 30 new taxpayers in lieu of the current tax-exempt user. Again, this is a church we're purchasing the property from. It'll be a welcoming and stately neighborhood entry along with tree-lined streets throughout. It'll be a walkable community providing connection between school facilities at Isbister Elementary and Pioneer Middle School. As Laura mentioned, we are doubling the tree replacement requirement, which is an additional 70 trees. And we do have a very nice landscaped pond. We are increasing setbacks to neighboring homes in several of the areas, which are the important areas. And a little shameless self-promotion, but Robertson is a highly respected regional builder with over 75 years of experience. And that's really important because it shows our commitment and our capabilities to deliver on the project. And actually, if you go to the next couple of pages here, it shows the projects we currently have. Again, this is shameless self-promotion, but a couple of the projects that we have in approval right now. So similar to tonight, going through the entitlement process. And then the next page is all of the different communities we have under construction. And that really just goes to show you that, you know, we're not fly-by-night, we're a professional organization and this is what we do for a living. And I would, by the way, I'd put our reputation up against any other home builder in this market and ask around and I'm confident in that. So what we have here is the site concept plan. And this, you know, essentially shows, it is kind of a narrow piece of property, which is why we pursue the open space or the cluster housing option. Our entrance is off of Canton Center Road. That is our only entrance. That will be a nicely landscaped area. Got some pictures here later of what that'll look like. But that'll be our, kind of what I call a stately entrance. Tree-lined street as you drive down and then you'll have the pond on the right, which is just a really nice, I think it'll be a very nice open space presentation as you drive into the community. I mentioned it's our only point of access. We are providing for a future point of access in the southeast corner and we're amenable to the recommendations that Laura had mentioned about the continuance of that road in the future. There will be a master deed, by the way, for this. It's not a condo project per se, it's a site condo. They are individual, single-family homes. They'll own their entire lot. But there will be an association set up to maintain the roads and the open space. Some of these pictures here, these renderings, that top is the entrance as you come off of Canton Center Road. And then I guess if you were in a very tall vehicle or flying through on the bottom, that would be what you'd see as you come in toward the open space pond on the right. As far as context with the overall neighborhood, as you can see, that shows Pioneer Middle School to our west. It shows Isbister Elementary to the right. One of the things that came up quite a bit in our neighborhood discussions was this is being used a lot by children going from one school to the other or just cut through from one area to the other. So what we're, because of those conversations, and when you can see it, it's pretty clear, there is a connection. We've agreed to incorporate a connection all the way through, connecting from a sidewalk up to middle, that goes up to Pioneer Middle School in our west and then a crossing which meets Wayne County standards to the east across to Isbister. And as Laura had mentioned, we're still working with the school district on how that looks. There is a neighborhood to the north. It's a higher density than what we are proposing. There's a higher density to the northeast of the property where you see Stonehedge Drive. And they're a single-family, very similar to what we're proposing south of us. We think we're a very good transition in between. And then, of course, the churches to the north of us. This neighborhood exhibit, the purpose of this is just to show how we really fit into the neighborhood. So as I mentioned, the neighborhood to the north, it's a pretty tight neighborhood. From their closest point to our property line, it's just under 19 feet. We are putting our pond there. That originally was not part of the plan. Once we got in engineering, it was obvious that that was the low point where we'd have to put the pond. So that'll be a very nice open space, I think, for those existing residents. And actually, they had some concerns originally when we had homes backing there. And then on the southwest portion, I just put in some, basically what our engineers had calculated as far as the setbacks are with the current homes. They're basically 40 to 45 feet. Rear setback to what will be our property line. For the most part, we're 60-plus. Now, I say 60-plus, I can't give you an exact number because it depends on which home our purchasers purchase for those homes, but these are 140-foot wide, 140-foot deep lots. We did that on purpose. We felt having as much buffer from the neighborhood itself was important. In fact, their lots are only 125 feet deep. So we're actually about 20 more than they are. So we're gonna have a deeper setback. And you'll see we have one siding at 35 feet, which 35 feet is, as Laura mentioned, one of the deviations. And these homes, depends on which home buyers, you know, which homes they select. So we have ranches and two stories and that really affects what the footprint is. But on the south side, we'd have about 60-plus, as I mentioned. The next page, and I know in your packet I've given you some elevations. This is just a little bit more color on what the product will look like. We are proposing ranches and colonials. The one on the top left is actually a product, a ranch home that we're building in a couple other nearby neighborhoods. One in Northville Township, if you ever want to go see it, so you can see what we're talking about. You know, hardy stone brick. It's a very nice plan and it's been very well-received by the market. But again, this is a single-family neighborhood, so that would just be one option they could have. The pictures on the bottom, the renderings, those are sort of the direction we're heading with our new product line. So that's kind of a snippet as we're going through that process. And that's it as far as the presentation. I'd like to respond to some of the consultant's comments before we open up the questions from you. One of the comments was adding, and this was a previous comment, adding a sidewalk on the Canton Center frontage, which we have provided that. So there is a home on Canton Center, just to the south of our entrance, that the church owns. And we're purchasing just a portion of the backyard as part of this project, but they have agreed to allow us to build a sidewalk that would continue down from our... Laura, if you can go to the site plan, that would be great. We'd be continuing from our entrance south with a sidewalk. That was one of the comments, which we've agreed to do. Laura mentioned increasing the tree replacements. Again, we've agreed to double the tree requirements. So that's additional 70-plus trees on the site. Providing a sidewalk connection to the Isbister School on the east side of Canton, that is something, again, that we have been talking about. We think that's very important to have that connection from school to school. Work with staff to create a substantial green buffer along the north and south property lines. If you can see on the site plan, I think there are pretty significant plantings on the north side just because we have, you know, some land available there behind those lots. We really don't have that condition on the south. We're not able to do that. I know as part of the neighborhood conversations, they wanted us to keep some natural vegetation on that south side. It's just not possible. By the time we have all of our engineering requirements, we have to be able to retain all of our onsite stormwater. We cannot basically allow any of our water to go onto neighboring properties. So what that requires us to do is to put storm drain structures in the back of those lots, all the way up to the property line to capture all of that storm, so it doesn't go onto our neighbors. So we're not able to keep any existing vegetation. That's not unique to us. That would be, any project that would come in here would have to have that requirement. So we'd love to be able to keep a 15-foot or 20-foot buffer. Those lots are certainly deep enough, as you can see. The other, you know, example with the footprint shows those are definitely deep enough. The issue is we just simply can't because of engineering requirements. So one of the things that we've been talking about, and we've done this in another community, actually, we did this in Canton not too long ago, we're amenable to working with each of those six existing homeowners to the south of us. I would reach out to all of them and we'd be willing to plant trees in their backyard if that's something that they would want for a buffer. So we did that in Canton. I walked every single, there was actually more homes than this. And we put stakes in the backyards and planted where they wanted them. We're willing to do that. I mean, we have plenty of trees on the north side because of the doubling of the trees. If we could just move some of those to the south on our neighbors' properties, we'd be willing and amenable to be doing, to do that. Another comment was loop the water system from the north. We are asking the church to give an easement to the township. In order to do that, we are not willing to extend the loop. The costs of that are fairly significant. It would be in the backyard of those homes and it's not a requirement. So we are meeting, we are meeting all of the requirements for a dead-end loop and that's just simply something that we would not be willing to do and nor is it a requirement. So I just wanted to bring that up. As far as the future connection, language in the master deed as for the future connection, we're willing to do that. We're willing to put a sign up that says future connections of home buyers will be aware of this. We'll put it in our master deed that there would be a connection in the future or could be a potential connection in the future, just so there's no questions. That'll be, as they purchase the homes, that master deed language will be part of their deed. So there would be no issues with that on our part whatsoever. Another one was look to eliminate the curb cut on Canton Center to the remaining house. So that's the house I'd mentioned off of Canton Center that the church is retaining, where we're including the additional sidewalk. We are willing to do that. There are some engineering issues with that request, just from a grading standpoint. We're willing to do that. Basically, what that is saying is, to the right of Lot 1, where that existing house is, that house, instead of coming off Canton Center, would have its driveway come off our future road. I think it makes sense, just looking at it from an engineering standpoint, that you'd want to have that. Our only concern is that that would then have more than 30 homes on a single road. And that was, I think that's a requirement of fire. If they're willing to, you know, say that that home would be able to be fought from, the fire would be fought from Canton Center Drive and we wouldn't lose any of the 30, then we'd be willing to do that. But that's my only concern with having that requirement. So I guess conditionally conditioned is something we'd be fine with. And then continue to work with staff on building facade designs. We're working with TK Design. They're nationally acclaimed. They're based at a South Lion and I think they do a really great job. As I mentioned, before we finalize those plans, we'll work with staff throughout. And, you know, if you guys want to have input as well, we're willing to do that. We want to do this right, so that's our intent. The only other one that came up tonight, what I didn't know about is the approval for the road length. Obviously, that's something that we would need for this project. I think our intent with having that drive-through between nine and 10, that that would be necessary, but, you know, the project really doesn't work without that. So we'd hope as part of the approval that that could be, that waiver could be handled. So in summary, the project provides for an appropriate transitional land use from the more intense districts to the north and east of the site. Provides for a much-needed pedestrian connection between Isbister and Pioneer. Density is actually less than the allowable density of the cluster housing ordinance. The site plan provides for that stub street, so that a connection can be made when, and if that property to the south ever develops. We tried to buy that property. As of right now, they're not interested in selling. We'd love to be able to continue the site to the south where the farm is, but right now, I don't think they're interested in selling. Project provides for a significant buffer zone along the north property line and then the extra-deep lots to the south. Of course, we have the double amount, double the amount of trees required. We believe it provides for quality development with a clear community housing need. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Two questions?
Yes.
So the average price is 500,000? Expected to be 500,000?
I think we'd probably start in the 400s. But yes, I would say by the time they option and we have lot premiums, we have a design gallery in our office where they can select countertops, cabinets, flooring. So yes, I would assume that they'll squarely be in the 500s.
And refresh my memory, the south perimeter, does that, that follows the property line? Because it, every time I look at it, it always strikes me as it's, because it's like crooked?
I think everything is on that skew, yes.
Yeah.
There's no gap, if that's what you're...
There's no gap?
Correct.
Okay, so it's the houses to the south that are asymmetrical relative to their own property line? Because the further you go from west to east of the houses that are on the south, the wider the gap is?
You know, I never noticed that. I do know that we're certainly planning all the way to the property line.
Yeah, okay.
That's an interesting, that's an interesting observation. And I guess it could be...
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, first I'd like to thank you for reaching out to those neighbors.
Sure.
You know, and you expressed sincerity in trying to fit this into the existing area.
Yes.
So I know that I and several of the commissioners did look at the video when you appeared before the Board of Trustees. And there was some comments made. They thought that it's gonna look... They thought that it's going to look like tract housing. They were concerned about the density. So I think you, I appreciate all the trees and the other things. I think that will help, but just to make you aware that they may have a much different view than what we may have, or we may be in agreement with them. But one thing that did come out of that discussion, and perhaps you told us when you appeared here initially, that I didn't remember, and that was the agreement that you have with the church on the acreage on that north side. So you currently own it, and then you're deeding it back to the church. Is that my correct understanding?
No, we would not be deeding it back. It would be, it would be part of this development. So essentially, I guess the, maybe the simplest way to describe this is, we're purchasing not 10.58 acres from the church. So that's the parcel that we're purchasing. As, one of the conditions that they had on us is they wanted us to be sensitive to their existing ball fields. So that was very important to them. If it's important to the seller, it's important to me. So as we were going through our site planning process, we knew we had to be conscious about how we would affect their ball fields, because that was something that the parishioners certainly had concern about. So as we were site planning, we've gone through many site plan iterations here, as we were site planning, a couple of things became evident. There is a swale on the north, north of these lots, 22 through 30, there's a swale there, and it makes it difficult to go any farther north. And especially with adding in that sidewalk that we're adding for the pedestrian connection from the, from school to school, so north of 22, that really became our demarcation line for those rear lots. So from, you know, the sensitivity that we have, what our seller had asked, that is kind of how we landed on the site plan. As far as, and it's actually good for our neighbors as well, or for our homebuyers as well, because there's really, there's no assumption of what might happen in the backyard someday for lots 22 through, or 22 through 30. If this does develop at some point, the church, you know, they sell the back half or they redevelop it, our homebuyers wouldn't have to worry about having anything come up right into their backyard. So it's kind of beneficial in both respects. As far as the mechanics of how that's going to be, we're purchasing it. That's going to be, the HOA is going to own that property. When we say deed restriction, what we're basically saying is the master deed is essentially going to allow the church to continue use of that area. So it will not be deeded back as far as the land. It would just be, the church would have the right to use that to continue their ball fields. So that's, that's what it is.
Well, thanks for clarifying that. So that leads me to yet another question. Laura, as an advocate for the future homeowners, so they will be responsible for the grass cutting that would, you know, that's on that parcel or on that stretch of property?
Essentially, since the church would still have use of it, I think they'd want to continue to maintain that. So that would be, you know, part of the agreement or language that would be in there. But yes, if that was ever to develop the church north of that, that area, that strip of land, would be our HOA's responsibility to maintain in perpetuity.
And what about any liability considerations?
Liability is on the HOA, yes.
Okay.
It's really more of a, I'd consider more of an easement than, say, a deed restriction. That's probably how we should have worded it, is easement for the church to allow, allow them to continue use of it.
Okay. So going through the reports, sort of page by page?
Yeah.
So on page two, there's this little matrix about the front yard depth and the perimeter yard. So you're asking for some setbacks there, and it's up to us to hear from you what the justification is for that, the 30 feet and the 25 to 35 feet.
In our, from our standpoint, the rear yard is more important than the front yard. And especially when, you know, we were laying this out, knowing that we have residents to the south, knowing that the church wanted us to be sensitive to the area to the north, those were, that's really how we came to that driving of what the setbacks are. We're still going to have, I think it's a minimum of, give me a second, the driveway to the garage, it is a 20-foot minimum to the garage for that, from the sidewalk, so there's not any issue with a car overhanging and not being able to walk through. So that's, you know, to us, that's important. But specifically, it is for the rear yard, more usable rear yard, which I think is more valuable to the community, to our neighbors and to our homebuyer.
Are there questions, concerns about that aspect of it, Commissioner?
I have three items.
Yes.
When you mentioned the HOA responsibilities earlier, you said they'd be responsible for roads and sidewalks. I think you meant to say pond as well, right?
Pond, exactly. Open space, pond, yes.
Secondly, under your mechanical that you submitted, it shows the roads look to be asphalt as well as driveways. Is that the intent, or are these concrete driveways and concrete roads?
You know, I don't know if that's necessarily been figured out. We would typically do that in the final. I don't think we necessarily have a preference, to be honest. We usually have asphalt roads and typically have, honestly, concrete driveways. But I don't know if that's necessarily something that has been decided yet. Typically, we'll do that through the final site plan. I don't know if there's a preference or a requirement that the township has, but generally speaking, that is how we do it, asphalt road and concrete driveway.
In the last item, I was at that Board of Trustees meeting a month ago, and I heard a somewhat spirited discussion amongst whoever was representing you that night. I don't think it was you.
That was me.
Of you and certain board members, when they made something Dennis referred to, they had concerns about density. So then I've been studying the site map you presented, and I think I figured out, you know, a comfort level for me. When you look at lots 6 through 9, when you look at 10 and 17, essentially those corner lots, 23 and 30, they appear to have a pretty standard wider footprint for width. But then when you go to 1 through 5 especially, and then when you get over to 11 through 16, 24 through 29, the width is considerably narrower. I don't know if it's 10-foot, 15-foot, 20-foot, but I'm certainly of the opinion that those wider lots, which you have on, just probably a little bit less than half, has a lot better look. I know that the financial is a downside, but I'd be more in favor of seeing some uniformity of the wider lots. They all have about the same depth with some little exception, but I think those are... What is your lots, maybe 24 or 1 through 5? What is your width?
They are roughly 53-plus feet in width.
53 roughly?
53 feet.
And then when you go to 7 through 9, what are those?
7 through 9 are 69, 69, and then 82.
Right. So about 15, 16-foot a difference. And I think the same would be true when you look at the 23 through 30 and 17 through 10, where you probably, are those similar 55s and 69s roughly?
Those are, no, they're actually more, those are 58. I think they're mostly 58.
And what about the corners?
The corners are like 78, 72 and 78.
Right.
And, you know, just to respond to that, you know, I think there's a reason why you have a cluster housing option ordinance. It's for situations like this. I mean, we would love to take some of the area in some of those corner lots and spread it out, and actually, we had that at some point, and it just kept getting tighter and tighter. So from our standpoint, I think that is the purpose of the cluster housing ordinance. This is a tough site to deal with, just because of the access. It's not, you know, rectangular the entire way through. So we really, our impression of what your cluster housing option ordinance is, is exactly for sites like this, which doesn't give you necessarily standard lots everywhere. From our perspective, the homebuyers are perfectly fine with what we're offering. In fact, again, they'd rather a depth than width in most cases. The homes are about 38 feet in width, so they're not extremely wide, even though they're going to be, you know, somewhat larger homes. So you'll have some space there. The tighter setbacks, you mentioned it, 1 through 5 would be where probably our tighter setbacks, tighter lots are. In our mind, there really isn't anybody impacted with that, because there aren't any existing neighbors that would have to, you know, say, be behind that or anything like that. And I don't think you'd notice that as you come in, because you have, we have that beautiful pond to the right. In our mind, this is, this is really how a cluster housing plan comes together.
I would say irrespective of all that, having been to that meeting, I was thinking when you were going to present tonight, you may have made an adjustment, but you didn't. But I can see, after attending that meeting, it's going to be a tough sell. We're an advisory council here, or advisory board, but it's going to be a tough sell to Board of Trustees, from what I saw, based on the density and especially the width.
No, understood. I mean, I hear everything you're saying at this point. I mean, in our estimation, you really have to look at the entire project. And we feel with all the additional open space, that it really justifies, you know, those types of conditions that we have. And again, these are extremely deep lots, so the lot size themselves really isn't the concern. It's how you fit it all. It's really, I mean, this is a Rubik's Cube of how to put this all together. And we've spent a lot of time, and again, we're, you know, we are, we've had 75 years experience, so we do know what we're doing as far as what the market would like. And this is what we came up with. So this is, this is our proposal. You know, obviously, you have your choices and decisions to make, but this is what we were proposing to build on the site.
Keith, you had something related to the setbacks?
Well, it was the relocation of trees to the south side. How many trees are you anticipating would be? And I know people have to agree to have them in there, but I'm just wondering over what space those trees might be included.
You know, I don't, I don't know if I had anything necessarily in mind. Probably two or three would be enough, I would assume. It depends on the type of tree, where it's located. The reason we're proposing to put it on their property is because the closer you get, obviously, the more screening it would do. That's the reason why it would be on their property rather than, say, on our property. So I don't know if you need five trees on every lot to make that happen. I would think two to three. When we did this at the other community that I mentioned, it was, it was probably an average of two or three per lot.
And how large would those trees be?
I think typically, they were 78 feet, depending on what species we were using. I don't recall, to be honest, though. They would be what our planting requirements would be on our property, you know, as far as what the ordinances would be. But again, we're amenable. We're kind of speaking out loud. We're willing to resolve the issue.
A lot owner, existing lot owners would really be able to go right, very close to the back of their lot, wouldn't they?
The existing lot owners? Oh, with the tree? Yes, I think they do have storm in their backyard as well, from what my engineer had said, so they would have to pull it off a little bit. But yeah, they, like I mentioned, they've got some of them 40 to 45 feet that they'd be able to put those trees. So it would be really wherever, in our proposal, it'd be wherever they'd want to put those.
Okay, just focusing again on just on the lot size?
Yeah.
Because that's part of the report we're talking about. So if these setbacks were granted as you're requesting, is that going to impact the size of these homes? Because my concern here is, initially, you say you're marketing, you know, to young families because of the ideal location for the schools. Well, they don't want very small homes, but, you know, it has to be manageable for a family. So how does these setbacks, if we didn't grant the setbacks as you wanted, you say, well, we want something not quite that restrictive, how would that impact the size of the home? Or are you going to plop the same size home no matter what you have?
Essentially, yeah. The plan, the product that we're proposing here, and again, we're designing it for, specifically for Plymouth, but it would be used in other communities going forward as well, obviously. They're, I think they're 38 feet in width, but they range anywhere from 1,800 to about 3,200 square feet. So from a size standpoint, they would meet the market for sure. They'd have two to five bedrooms. You know, it's utilizing a lot more space than maybe the traditional Colonial would do, and we have some room to move to the back as well. So I don't think we'd have any issues with the size of the homes based on, and in fact, I know that because we're, we designed specifically to this site plan.
So your justification for these setbacks is because you're, yes, the lots may be narrower, but you're making up for it for the length of the lot?
That, and the amount of open space, and, you know, the pond and the number of trees, the doubling of the trees, the connection. So yes, again, it's all part of the cluster package is how we interpret the ordinance, yes.
Any other questions related to that aspect?
Yes, one, please. So the square footage per lot, what's the variation between the minimum square footage per lot and the maximum square footage per lot?
So our smallest would be 50, like I said, 53 by... My engineer should have this on here. I'm sorry, by 134. So what is that, 7,000 square feet? So those are the ones, and I'm just roughing that, but the ones along the entrance. And then the larger ones get to, you know, 72 by 130, so about 10,000.
So I guess what I'm interested in is the ratio of the footprint of the house to the square footage of the lot.
Oh, the footprint of the house.
And how that ratio works, and what the minimum ratio per square footage per house to the lot is and the maximum.
Okay.
I'm just interested in that number.
Sure, yeah. So our, I would say our biggest footprint would be our ranch, which is about 1,800 square foot plus a 400-foot garage, 400 square foot garage. So that's about 2,200 square feet. And that would be on, you know, if you put on the smallest lot, which is 7,000 square feet, you could see it's certainly a third or less. I don't think lot coverage is necessarily the issue because of the depth of the lots.
Understand, but the presentation is going to be reflective of the size of the house on the lot. So width means something. And I'm just trying to get an appreciation for that perspective relative to the neighborhood.
And it's not a, it's certainly not an exhaustive example, but on the neighborhood design rendering, it does kind of show just a snippet of what that street scene would look like. So that's actual, our product laid out on the actual lots.
So this is not a rendering, this is actual?
No, this is a rendering of this site. So it's the actual site plan and the actual elevations of the site of the homes. Yeah, on the bottom, bottom left.
Thank you.
So the next, you know, I think, I think Commissioner has raised a good point, is that it's how this is presented. And, you know, the Board of Trustees, some of those members were concerned about that look. And if these houses, especially if you put the two-story homes in there on a fairly narrow lot, it's not going to provide a good presentation, and it will look like, quote-unquote, "tract housing." So I think that's what, I think the commission is concerned about and the Board of Trustees will be concerned about.
Sure, and I don't want to keep, you know, reiterating the fact. I mean, there are parcels that have just been passed over, and this is one of them. And it's very difficult to make it all work. So, you know, we feel that this is a very nice community, very nice entrance. I don't think there would be anybody that would object when we're built out of this project. So again, we're, we feel, based on your ordinances, that we're hoping that was the purpose for the cluster housing ordinance.
All right, well, we'll move on. We'll talk about the trees. We touched on it a little bit. When I, I have to admit, when I read the report, I was a little aghast by seeing that there would be so many trees removed and you're only preserving 12. But when I looked at the landscape plan, most of those trees are cottonwood trees, the vast majority of them.
Yes.
So they're not real good quality trees. But I was also pleased that you're going to double the amount of the replacement trees. But how many trees are there? I don't know if it was on the plan. I couldn't figure out how many trees will... I couldn't figure out how many trees will, will.
I think it was about 144 in that, in that neighborhood. It's 144 trees. And again, we would like to save a lot more, just if we didn't have to deal with engineering standards.
Yeah, right. Well, I can understand it.
But yes, I mean, certainly, we would, we would love to be able to save more.
So are you going to be able to fit 144 trees on this site?
It's tight, yes. I mean, as you, you'll see on the landscape plan, you know, it's basically around the storm pond, it's for the homes, and it's basically that area behind those units before it gets into the swale on the church, you know, well, our property, but the area that would be reserved for the church, that, that is basically all we could, the only areas we could fit that. So that's why I'm saying, I think we have enough trees to move them to the, our neighbors to the south. That's something that you desire.
Okay, then I'm just going to turn to the engineer about the south boundary, you know, and the issues that he raised about the infrastructure that would exist under there. I'm not sure if it's possible for you to look and see what was the solution that was done on the reserves that was, or the Tuscany. There were neighbors there that were concerned. They did not have a storm drainage in the rear of their lot. That was their concern. Of course, the new development did have that in there. And they raised that issue up, but I believe they did plant some trees there. And I don't know if that's something you can look into and maybe address it with the applicant? Is that, is that might be a viable solution or not?
Sure.
So that's another recent cluster housing development that we had, and the same issues we're concerned there. Those people was very heavily wooded.
Right.
Of course, they weren't very happy to see, you know, all that gone.
Familiar with the site.
They wanted screening, you know, but there might be a possible solution there, so we asked the engineer to.
Sure, I mean, we're willing to resolve it. I mean, again, there's not anybody from the public, so I think that, you know, I don't, I don't know how loud the, you know, the objection is, but it's certainly something we recognize that, especially with our neighborhood meetings, that there was enough conversation that it worked.
Any comments on the, on trees or the southern boundary? Okay. You, you addressed the, the issue about the home that's on Canton Center that's owned by the church?
Yes.
Would that home be expected to participate in any SAD when it comes time to replace that road or upgrade that road?
I mean, as it currently sits, no, because it's not connected. When it has its access to the new road, technically speaking, yes, they probably would have to be part of the master deed for, just for roadway purposes only. I have not got to that level of detail with discussions with the church. But yes, I would, I would imagine they would have to have a, it'd probably be a small percentage. They wouldn't have to pay for anything else as far as the master deed and bylaws, but if it has access, I would assume they'd have to be part of that, yes.
And then this connection point to Village Manor. I had that same question, I think that you raised, the security or the safety around the detention pond. And to make a connection to Village Manor, there is no sidewalk in Village Manor except that leads from Canton Center up to where the boulevard or the circle starts. So those kids would be really walking in the street if that connection was made. I don't think that's a safe environment to do, but I do see that you did make the connection. And I guess, I don't know if that exists on the church property that goes over to Pioneer Middle School?
It doesn't on the portion north of Unit 22. It doesn't exist, but it does exist to the west of us. There is a connection from the neighborhood from, from the south of us.
Oh, okay.
Route of Pioneer. We would just be connecting directly to that. So that's one of the conversations we have to have with the school district, obviously. It's probably not even 20 feet from our property line to where that sidewalk is, but we would propose to connect, yes.
Okay. And I, I don't know, this, I'm sure you're going to raise these issues up when you are more in deep discussions with the school about the connection point, but, you know, the sidewalk, there's a sidewalk on the south side of this road as it approaches Canton Center. So the kids would cross, I guess, at that point, as opposed to having to cross the street. I guess, you know, it'll be fine, I think. You know, I'm just a little concerned about the pedestrian circulation there, but I think that's something you'd have to work out with the school system.
I agree. You know, we've been researching safe routes to school, the website, and, you know, what we have right now proposed is, is the Wayne County, you know, standards. But we are willing to have whatever discussions, you know, and we've addressed this on other communities as well. So the important part is we have a sidewalk connection there. We're showing sidewalk connection on the other side, and then we can deal with the school district on details.
And the building facades, if I understood you correct, the, the ones that you provided here, are these the actual ones or these are just samples of what you've used? Because you showed us on this other development, the two that were on the, on the bottom that are sort of the direction that you're thinking of?
I'd say the ranch specifically is what we would propose to build here. You know, again, that's hardwood, that's brick, that's, that's stone. That is what we're building in nearby communities. The Colonials, that's what we're still working through. So that is the direction we're going. You know, we're, I don't want to say it's completely open because we are working through some, some things right now, but, you know, we're, we certainly want what's, what fits into Plymouth. And we certainly are working your design ordinances when we design this with TK Design.
So there's ranches and two-stories, no story and a halves?
Correct, no story and a half, no split level. It's just either the ranch or different sizes of the two-story colonial.
Questions on, on the renderings and what we see with the rancher? Okay. All right. So I want to talk a little bit about the road.
Yes.
So, you know, when I saw the, the renderings of this, I was a little surprised to see the asphalt and the asphalt drives, because those are not long-term road surfaces. And I think they don't look as, what do I want to say? It doesn't give a certain sense of permanency as a concrete would do. And I worry about, again, being an advocate for the future homeowners, the cost of maintaining So I think if the Commission were, we have to approve the length of this private road, what are the Commissioner's thoughts versus asphalt and concrete? Because if one of the standards we're supposed to use is the cost to the homeowners, then certainly we're adding to the cost if it were in asphalt as opposed to concrete. Any comments on that, thoughts? Okay.
I would just say, I don't, I'm not sure I like the looks of the asphalt either. I think concrete is what is the right way to go. That's pretty much what we have in Plymouth Township, and I think you should consider that situation.
I agree.
And then, again, on the topic of roads, so you'd indicated, that was one of my questions that you answered early on in your presentation, this is going to be a private road.
Yes.
So my suggestion to you would be, you know, I had, my daughter lived in Village Manor, and that's also a private road. And what happened in that neighborhood is that when Isbister had special events, you know, concerts, parent-teacher meetings, you know, all of that, parking was tight. So they parked on Village Manor Drive, and people weren't too happy about that. And that's, and so eventually what happened, they had an agreement with the school. The school would let them know if they're having, you know, an activity that a number of parents would show up. So they had a sign, you know, a little teepee-type sign, and said, you know, you know, private road, no parking. I suggest you have a permanent sign somewhere that just says private drive, no school parking or something, and that probably will resolve a lot of issues for the residents there.
I can see that being an issue from Pioneer Middle School as well, where parents will park there, take that pathway from Pioneer just so that they can get out of there much quicker. And also, if I could just interject with regarding the connectivity to the development to the north, I know we've talked about this a lot, but also looking at the future, where this development may connect to the south, I think it would be really nice for residents to be able to walk from the development to the north through yours to the south, stay off Canton Center Road, stay off the, stay away from the traffic, the craziness that gets on Canton Center Road. So Laura, do you have any comments on concerns about the safety of the connectivity there around the pond?
Well, the applicant does have concerns about installing a pathway along that area for safety reasons, so I think that is out of the question at this point unless the pond was, was changed or relocated.
Yeah, if I could just, if I could just add to that, the real issue is Wayne County will not allow anything within their pond boundary. And you can just see how wide that, that pond is. There's really no room for connection as it is. And then again, it doesn't really go anywhere, so it would just end up, you know, at, at the south end of their landscape, which I think is pretty treed. So that was one of, when we had neighborhood, a neighborhood, first neighborhood meeting, they were very concerned about us infringing on them. And I think that, I don't think that they would appreciate it. I'm not, I don't want to speak for them, but I know that there, there is no connection there, and I didn't get any warm and fuzzy that they wanted us to have any type of connection through as we had our discussions with them. So it's really a matter of being able to fit it in there, first of all, and then where does it go?
Given that I live in this neighborhood, in this area, and we walked through the development to the north, we, my kids went to Pioneer, my kids went to Isbister, and I just, I beg to differ. I think that being able to connect these communities is what this township is looking for, is making our community more walkable, having more enjoyment for residents to be able to walk safe, quieter neighborhoods, not be on the busy streets. So if there is any way to connect them, I think that would be good.
We were hoping that, and not to interrupt, I'm sorry, we were hoping that, you know, the connection that will go to the future to the south whenever that develops. And then across, which then connects to this walk, you know, the sidewalk that goes south and to Pioneer, I mean, that really was our intent to connect neighborhoods together. So I understand that the Village, you know, Village Manor wouldn't be necessarily included, but I, again, they'd be walking through their private road once they get up there, and that's, that's just something that we had not thought was, you know, something that they would want to see.
Okay, so to continue with the school, so you've been in contact with them, though, as far as getting their input on what they'd like the connectivity to look like to Isbister and Pioneer?
I know Laura has a meeting next week to kind of continue those discussions, where, as I've mentioned to her many times, we're, we're open to whatever those details are. I mean, obviously, with, with 30 homes, you know, there's, there's not the ability to, you know, put in, you know, an overpass or anything like that, but we are certainly willing to make it as safe as possible, because I think that's, that's important for our future home buyers as well.
Okay, so there is communication with the school district on this?
Yes.
Okay. And then one more question on the, on your site plan there. On Lot 1, what is just straight to the east of that?
That is an area we're purchasing, it's part of the purchase. And then essentially what that is, we're putting Unit 1, that will be open space, very similar to what, it's kind of the same situation as this situation over here, where that is part of their backyard of that house. We would be doing the same thing as far as giving them use of that backyard, so they can always have that use. But Unit 1 starts, or the number 1, is that would be where the lot is, that homeowner to the east, which is, it is, it is owned by the church. It's one of the members of the church that lives there. They'd still have access back there. There's actually a little garden they have back there, so that's what we're providing for.
So actually, the density on this site, then, would actually be greater because of all of the space that you cannot build on?
Well, we are, we're purchasing 10.58 acres. I mean, the density is what the density is, yes.
But you can't build on 10.5 acres?
We couldn't anyway because of setbacks, so it's basically, you know, meeting your ordinances as far as density. I think we're at 2.85. We're under the 3.05, which is allowed in the ordinance.
Okay, I don't have anything else.
What, next to Lot 1, I guess it's Lot 0, but what is that, is there a structure on it, or what does that little box represent?
I think it's a shed back there. And again, he's got a, he's got a garden back there. So what we told them was, we'll let you continue to have use of that, of that area.
I like your mailbox setup, you know, the, the structure of it and how you have it planned out a bit. Are you going to irrigate that grassy strip to the north of the, of your street? Yeah, that area?
Yeah.
That'll be irrigated?
Yes.
And what about around the, so the whole, the whole public area, other than what the church is going to be?
Yeah, generally speaking, yes.
Everything is going to be irrigated?
Yes.
Okay. And then one thing that I would just ask you to consider is, I'm also on the Historical District Commission, so we've been asking, you know, developers like you and some businesses, if they can just put the date maybe on their sign, and then they have to be something really, you know, either on the sign or like a little cornerstone on the, on the masonry of your sign that you've presented, that could just have the date, or if you want to put established in the date, or just the date, you can do whatever you want. So if you consider doing that, I think we would appreciate that.
Thank you.
So just, what would be the closest distance between the narrowest lot? I know it's going to conform, but between the narrow lots, okay, between the two homes? I mean, I'm concerned that when you come down the street that's got the narrow lots, the deep narrow lots, that it's going to look different and constrained, like 10, 11, 12. So I know there's ordinances that reflect the distance between the lot line and whatever, but it, it seems to me that the complexion of the neighborhood is going to change when you go through those areas.
Sure. So the widest home we'd have would be 40 feet, and these are 53-feet-wide lots. So you would have essentially 13 feet.
13 feet.
If they use, if they build the ranch, which is the 40-foot. As I mentioned, I think all the Colonials we're building are 38 feet, so it would be a 15-foot separation from colonial to colonial.
So is there a way to put wider lots that, from 1 to, to 6, and narrow up somewhere else so that when you drive in, it, it doesn't give you that closed-end feeling?
We tried, we did, and then we had the requirement for the corner lots, which is a 25-foot requirement, which frankly, I think is, for a cluster, probably in my estimation, is not appropriate. But because of that, if you see Lot 6, it's got the 25-foot, we had to take it out of those, those lots essentially. And then it's kind of the same story with the other lots as you move to the west. We couldn't, we couldn't shift that road over to the west any because of the setbacks for 30 and 23, the corners. So we tried, we looked at that, and I don't think that that, I don't think your ordinances allow that to be reduced through the open space, otherwise that's probably where we would have put it, to be honest. I mean, if those were a 10-foot corner or 15-foot corner, we'd consider, you know, have considerably more in 1 through 5, which is what we had originally.
Other questions, comments, concerns, reflections? Are we ready for a tentative? And who would like to make a motion?
I want to commend you on your knowledge of the area and your involvement and insight. Thank you.
Yeah, you, it was a very good presentation. I can see you worked hard in trying to fit this together. And as I said earlier, just sensitivity to the surrounding area and trying to make it fit together, you know. So we're trying just to address the concerns that have been raised in the past and making sure that you have a clear ceiling through the rest of the process.
I appreciate what you did.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve tentative site plan for 23660920 with all of the conditions in, in the McKenna report and the Spalding Ddecker reports with consideration for the additional trees and the connectivity for the site to the Pioneer and Isbister schools.
Do you want to, you accept the justification for the setbacks?
Yeah, I, I think that it seems to me that the developer is doing the very best they can to accommodate and that we can accept the proposed setbacks as listed on page two under item two of the McKenna report.
And what about the approval of the private road, perhaps subject that it be concrete as opposed to asphalt?
We would, we would, yes, that, as I said in my comments, I believe that both the private road, we would approve the additional distance, which I guess we have to do, and then that the road and the driveways be concrete.
Is there support? Support? Okay. Move by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Postow, granting tentative site development plan approval to application 23660920, subject to set conditions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Good luck. Okay, sure, yeah.
Do we know where that is? This 750-foot thing, what part of the ordinance that's in?
So I don't believe it's in the zoning code, but in the general code?
Yeah, it's in chapter 12 of the general code of ordinances. It's a special requirement for length of.
Also, it's not in the zoning ordinance?
No.
That's, I don't, I don't know for you. I've never, I've been on this board for, since 2010 and I do not, or 2000, and I don't think that's ever come up.
Mm-mm.
So you caught something, did you? I'm sure we've had roads greater than 750 feet before. Very efficient of you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I need to take a quick break.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll just take a break here for a couple of minutes. And then next on the agenda will be this individual. You sent us a communication as to what you want, because we have no old business. So when Commissioner Pratt returns, you can just come up to the podium and give us your name and address and tell us what you are requesting or want to present.
You coming by track side tomorrow?
Yeah. Got some special treats lined up.
Hi. So he stopped.
Ah, nice.
He saw the governor was still on Monday, right?
I, I saw the picture, yeah, that's right. Why, why'd she stop by?
I don't know.
Just did.
She asked all the right questions.
That's good.
Very nonpartisan. Like, what's it going to take to make this work? And I think she was, I totally agree.
What'd you tell her?
I said, I'll play the role of my break even. And I think that's a very good one.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we're ready for you?
Well, we're going to talk about this.
So I was happy with the nonpartisan approach.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Terry Creed, and this is Shannon Kiling, who is with me, who is our, one of my key individuals in our office. I'm a Kent resident, very active in the Plymouth community as well. We have a office that's a marketing and advertising firm currently located in Novi. We're, we rent from that particular facility right on Eight Mile and Hagerty. We're taking a look with all the COVID stuff that was happening, and we've been planning for the last year to look for some property here that we could call home for a small office. Our company is staffed of around five or six people at the most. And then we rotate positions, and then right now we're doing a rotation with the COVID on who's attending the office. We ran across, have been looking for a long time, ran across this particular property, 9280 North Lilly Road, which is right on the corner of obviously Lilly and the Cross Street. I'm forgetting the name of that road right now at the moment, but it enters into the business district setting, light industrial. And then to the north of that, there is a complex of offices. And also to the northwest of that is the Chrysler Jeep dealer, followed by going left to right, another office facility. Across the street, there are three residence homes. To the south, there is also a income property. It's a small facility, but they have four units in there, which surprises me. I met some of the people today. And then we actually have some clients that are in the business unit across the street the other way. So we've put an offer on the house and purchased. We're looking to be able to do a special use permit. I believe that when we were looking at this, that most of the homes in Plymouth are like flying off the market before they're even listed. And this one here kind of hung out for a bit in talking to the realtors. It's just because of the location that it is either income property or businesses that are surrounding it. And there, there's a couple of other things with the, in the landing zone of Medical Airport, which I didn't realize until we spent some time on the property, that the planes were coming through. We think this would be a great location for us to call our future home and do some updates to it. The house was built in 1961, and I did my research before we, you know, made an offer on the house, and the individuals have been there 50 years. So the individual that's selling the house, or kids are selling it, the property is very sound and structural, just is at the age of 1961 home on the inside, but very well taken care of throughout the years. So, and also it has a very basic layout, which makes it for us in modification to turn it into a light office. We don't really need to affect the exterior of it all, or very little on the interior because it is an old home that has a small kitchen and that, and the rooms are small. It's advantageous to a, a, a small office environment. And I do like the fact that it's brick and then the property condition that I can actually get a little bit of. So we're, you know, in talking to Laura, you know, we were, we initially had a meeting with her to kind of go over the likelihood as I was putting a purchase agreement on this property of how fast this could happen and what our choices are. And the special use permit seemed to be to us even a better option than looking at zoning. And then the additional items that I just kind of, is that that area seems like it's changing, unsure of where it's going to be heading down the road. It seems to be, you know, multi-tenant all over. And like I mentioned earlier, I did stop and meet some of the neighbors. Most of the property has, are income, the two that are across the street are income units, income investment properties. There are two other individuals that I talked to, and they're, they were in their 80s. And so I got to meet the neighbors, so to speak. Everybody was fine with what we were looking to do. Actually, they had no questions and were, were happy that someone was buying the home. And most of the people that had residency there were aware of the lady that, and her husband had been there 50 years. So it seemed like a good situation. And so here we are trying to determine if the township is, you know, on our side to make these changes, that we'd allow us to be able to do this.
Is your, is your purchase offer conditional on the township?
Good question. I wish it was. It is not, so I'm taking a risk here. I would probably end up either doing one of two things. Obviously, I would turn it into an income property, which is not my first choice because I'd rather spend the money in an open space, which I'll be back to the ground zero doing that, or spin it back around and sell it. Which, again, that's not my plan either.
So, but, was your plan to adapt the current structure?
Yes.
To your office rather than tear it down and build something different?
We would keep the whole structure as is. Matter of fact, on the inside, there would be really no wall movement, none of that. We would utilize it as like, as is. We would probably do something to the exterior look of the house. It has aluminum shutters and an old aluminum awning over the front that needs to be replaced any. But like I said, the house is brick, you could use a good coat of paint, some modern landscaping, and we should be good. The, it has new concrete for a driveway, nice size garage, and a large backyard.
My.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just asking, what's the footage?
It is 1780, I believe.
What about the whole idea with five to seven employees? Were you looking to put a parking lot in back?
No, we were not. We were looking, we, we needed to do additional by the apron or the driveway to accommodate. We generally have rear doors at the most.
And do you?
And then, as far as our clients, oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. As far as our clients, we have very little client interaction. If we do have a client at our office, it's maybe one or two visits a week, and it's usually one, one person to two people. So we have no commercial trucks, no baggage. It's just, most people around us will, other than if we can get approval for a sign, a nice-looking sign outside, would never know it changed, other than it's better looking than it was before.
So if you expand your driveway, which means you're going to have cement come in to expand your driveway, would you be amenable to installing sidewalks on your, in the front of your property?
Yes, I would.
So can you help me understand again what your company does?
Pardon me?
What, what Advantage Marketing does, what do you do?
We are a full-service marketing and advertising firm that we act as an extension of companies to handle their marketing. A lot of it is digital and web development, creative design. Matter of fact, to give you an example, the most of the brochures that you have in here representing Plymouth Township, we've done those designs.
Okay. So can we assume as far as your transaction, your real estate transaction, that you're in pending status right now?
No, we're moving forward. It's, you know, right now we have a closing date set for November 10th.
So that means you're pending right now?
Oh, yeah. You're referring to that way. Everything's in motion, everything's completed, waiting for a close.
Will anyone live in the home?
Uh, no.
No? Okay. And, um, let's see. Laura, have, has anything been approved like this elsewhere in the township?
No. So the, the difficulty with this parcel is that it is zoned multifamily, which does not permit for office use. It permits for home occupation, but that's limited to one individual who's living at the home. So a rezoning would be one viable option. In looking at the future land use map, this is that whole area in brown, starting here, this is post of, is zoned, or is planned for multifamily on the future land use map. So this blue would be the office, and that's where it stops. When looking at this site, however, it's unlikely that this parcel, due to its size, would really be redeveloped for a meaningful multifamily without being combined with some of these southern parcels to make something efficient, similar to the multifamily that you see, you know, directly to the east. So if, if the township was interested, I think that there's, there's two ways to accommodate this. One would be to do a rezoning and then to adjust the future land use map and maybe rethink this area during the master plan process. The second would be to actually amend the ordinance. So that would be the township taking that on to allow for office, professional office use at a certain scale in the multifamily district, or making a overlay district that would be more mixed use. I think that is probably the most common approach that many municipalities have taken is that mixed use overlay in some of these transition areas. I have some examples on here. Livonia, Birmingham, Ferndale, they have all done similar districts. The city of Plymouth even.
So Laura, if we grant the special land use permit, would we get a chance to look at this again before we move somewhere else? Or would it be a permanent change?
If, if the township were to consider office use as a special land use in the multifamily district, then you would have a chance to review that at a separate meeting with a public hearing, but then that would run with the land.
So this suggestion though is for a special land use, not changing the zoning ordinance or the master plan, is that correct?
Well, I, I think there's, there's three options. One would be to, to amend the multifamily ordinance, so we wouldn't be changing the zoning of this property, but we would be altering the uses that you can do on this property. The other would be to rezone it. In that case, we would definitely want to look at the future land use map in this area because it's planned for multifamily and not office or not mixed use. And then the third option would be to create an overlay for this area in particular to maybe allow for some more flexibility, similar to what other communities have done.
And south of this property, that's multifamily, right? Like four units or something?
So the, the township's multifamily zoning district is, is not cut and drawn? So, the, the township's multifamily zoning district is, is not cut and dry, so it doesn't actually specify if you have two acres, then you can do this many units. It all is dependent on the setbacks of the property and how much parking and such you can accommodate. So, there really has to be, uh, you know, a survey and kind of a feasibility study that's done to show how many units you could get. But, you know, just, just from looking, you know, as a comparison to adjacent properties, this, this is not a large site. One other thing that I did want to mention, though, is in the multifamily district, we do allow as a special land use, other uses that I would say maybe are even more intensive than a small professional office. So, we do allow for veterinarian clinics as a special land use in the multifamily district, which can generate a lot of traffic, you know, depending on the type of, the type of business and how large it is.
So, you own the, the land, or that this parcel is from Lilly to the other road that services these Plymouth apartments?
Yeah, there's apartments behind it.
Yeah, so you own that whole thing. And what, what is the property to the south of you? Is that a residential home? I see a, a parking lot sort of behind it.
It is a, yeah, that is a odd situation, but it's a, it's a home that's converted into, uh, four units, and then they've added a parking lot to the backyard of it.
Oh, so it's a multifamily with four units to it?
Yeah, which are probably six hundred square foot each, if that.
Is that house about the same size as the one you have?
Yeah, I think the one we're looking at's actually larger than that one. It's four units, and probably, I'm going to guess, sixteen hundred square feet, fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, Laura, the overlay, did, we didn't, we do the overlay over at Gray's Greenhouse, that area, down in that area?
We, we did do an overlay for, for that, but it was just really looking at that corner at Joy.
Right.
Because previously, there was an overlay for spars on the west side, but it was mostly focused at that intersection, and not going north towards Ann Arbor Road and how this connects.
So, I think the overlay is a good, good approach, that the third option that you offered us?
The overlay?
Yeah. Now, I don't know how others feel, but...
So, the overlay, would the overlay be attached to the entire zoning section?
Yes, I think we'd, we'd want to look at, at least from postive down to, to Joy, and then if not, even, maybe even this portion before you get to the ARC district.
Well, but what's above there, that's office, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I, my, just like when, what we did down on the joint and Lilly corner, my, I think my preference would be that overlay choice, which would allow that to, to happen. And then, it also gives you flexibility within that.
So, what are you looking for us today? Just to see what, what we think of your idea, or what, what are you hoping to accomplish?
Well, I'm not sure of your total process. So, this was, like I said, we met with Laura one time to, you know, learn and make sure that what we were thinking was accurate, and that the special use permits and different, you know, we did a research of what else was going on, and then did the research of the surrounding area, and where that was heading. And we talked a little bit about how this group works, and this particular area, what the plans were for the future, because I was trying to get a, a likelihood of, you know, making an offer on this particular property. And, and I would think that when I, from my perspective, I looked at it and said, everything looks like it's a, a good opportunity for me, and I think that there was no downside other than a couple of those neighbors that I visited already, and, and they're in, and they have no issues with it, because most of the homes are investment homes, and that, actually, they've liked some of the new, a couple of the new office buildings that went in, because they dressed up the area a little bit. That intersection looks a little nicer now.
So, I don't know, Laura, perhaps, and I'll address this to the, the entire commissioner, may, maybe if you could just do a, a report for us, showing, you know, kind of detailing those three options for us? And, you know, we could consider that? I mean, I, I don't know. I don't feel comfortable making a decision, you know, tonight, you know, some direction on this, but...
Well, like I said, I was, I tried, wanted, I wanted to figure out what the proper procedure was, or what the best choice, based on what you felt, was the way to go. If it requires a, Laura asked if we would do the cement on Lilly Road, and we said we would do that. But to see what your plan was, what you're feeling, and what direction that we go into. So, I probably looked at the group more for the process. Obviously, the big thing for me would be is, you know, my wife and I made a decision to go ahead and buy the property, and, and hope, with the hopes of moving forward with this. We would like to know kind of the timeframe that we'd be able to move into the office, because I'll have an additional expense in the meantime of getting this ready and having another office. So, timing is everything, and I need probably thirty, forty-five days to clean up a new carpet and paint, and do things like that.
So, I think, you know, I think we should find a way to make it work. It seems to me that the overlay option is kind of like the path of least resistance.
I agree, as long as we have control, though, over this not expanding to something like a two-story...
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Oh, just so that we still have control over it not expanding to like a two-story office building, or a more intense use.
Yeah, the hope of that ever becoming a residential area or multifamily as it exists now is pretty slim, I would say.
Yeah. Because I believe Laura mentioned, it's kind of too small to do...
Especially with the price.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the use, I think, is inappropriate now for this area.
I, I think you get the impression that we want to work with you and find the, the proper route to go with it. So, you shouldn't feel concerned that it's up in the air, and we may or may not...
Right, right.
It, it seems pretty obvious that we're going to work with you, but we don't know the exact route.
Right, I appreciate that.
My, to, I, my thought process would be, you're, you're looking at at least a couple of months, because you got, uh, we, we, in order to do this, we have to have a meeting, we have to have a public hearing, we have to, you know, draft the proper documents to, to do it. So, I would say at least a couple of months. Would that be your thought process, Laura?
Yeah, so by the time we do a public hearing notice, and any change has to go to the Board of Trustees, too, so...
Right.
January is when...
Okay.
You know, that would kind of be the earliest, I think, that the board would...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, a couple of months at least.
When were you hoping to close?
Pardon me?
When were you hoping to close?
Uh, November tenth. I was hoping that just before the end of the year, we could move in.
I think you can see that the commission's willing to work with you. I think we've identified that the, the single-dwelling house is not, you know, probably not going to happen, you know, and multifamily. Otherwise, if we want to see another house changed into that, like the one to the south of you...
Right.
Or we want to just see the house exist as it is, but it's a, it's a, I would say, low-use office, just not really intensive. You don't have any big delivery trucks coming in, or any of that stuff?
No commercial vehicles at all.
Yeah. Right, yes, it's just finding the appropriate route. I think we're kind of in, in a certain direction. We just want to, you know, look at that. But it does have to go to the Board of Trustees, you have to have the public hearing, the whole thing. And Laura, does the, the trustees have to have a public hearing as well?
No.
Okay.
Just a, just a meeting.
So, Laura, the next steps would be what? To help this gentleman get along his way there?
Yeah, thank you for asking that.
The, the next step would be for this body to recommend to the Board of Trustees that the zoning overlay be considered, and then our department would get to work on some of that draft language and present it at the November meeting.
Okay.
So, you're, we could do that tonight if we wanted to?
Yeah, I think, I think it would be best to, to just at least send that notice formally to the Board of Trustees to, you know, to make them aware that this is something that needs to be undertaken.
Are people comfortable with that?
They am.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we still have to have a public hearing.
Well, we do, but we're sort of giving notice. She can start the ball rolling in that direction.
Probably December.
In the November meeting, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I would, I would really say December. That gives us the November meeting to discuss and make changes, and then bring the final back in December, and then to the board.
So, do you need a formal motion then to you, or what do you want to do? How, how, what should we?
Um, yeah, there could be just a formal, um...
Request or a motion?
Yeah, a, a formal, um, motion, um, request to the Board of Trustees to review overlay zoning districts for Lilly Road.
There'll be a new board seated November twentieth, or twentieth or so. It'll be a new board, so just be aware.
Let's hope not.
Well, it'll be some, there will be some new members, a minimum of two.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion.
Thank you for that.
Okay. That we consider moving this forward to the Board of Trustees with the public hearing at the next opportunity.
Is there support?
A second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Ostendorf and supported by Commissioner Pratt to notify the Board of Trustees of our intent to pursue a overlay for whatever the address is, ninety-two eighty North Lilly. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next is the Planning and Zoning Monthly Report.
Thank you. I'm happy to take any questions this evening. And then Trustee Doris Shavitz did pass along the latest Henry Ford Health System renders that were displayed last, yesterday evening to the Board of Trustees. Mark Corvo with Henry Ford was at the meeting and presented an update to the trustees.
It still looks similar to what they originally had, is it, Bob?
I beg your pardon?
It still looks similar to what, what was originally...
It's, it's very similar. I, I don't, I don't exactly recall, you know, how different it was, but he, Corvo, who's, I think his job is like government relations for Henry Ford, Henry Ford Health Systems. And he said that, just a reminder, that it's, uh, it's, it's a, an outpatient center, it's an ambulatory center. There will be, I think he said they're hoping for, to have patients in, well, well, definitely in twenty twenty-one. I can't remember the, I think he said by fourth quarter or so, to have, have, be taking patients. So, they're, they're moving forward now, like every other healthcare system, you know, they've been impacted by COVID, financially impacted, but they are not, they're not, they're moving forward with, with their plans. The design, I think we've talked about that in, in this body before as well. It's, it is supposed to be a, a nod toward the agricultural history of the township. I don't know. I don't know if I buy it. But, I mean, one hundred percent of the property in America at some point was agricultural. So, uh, but he had indicated they have similar designs in, I think he said Bloomfield Township.
Royal Oak?
Yeah. Uh, Corvo, yeah. Uh, I don't know. Any questions? Anybody have any questions, or?
Do they know when they would actually start construction?
Yeah, so, um, he said, somebody, who asked the question? Kermit, maybe?
Kermit?
Um, when are you going to, when are you going to start construction? He said, well, they're, you know, they're moving forward with the designs, and so, I mean, they're in process. He didn't really give a specific, like shovel-in-the-ground date. Oh, they also talked, the question was asked about the out, outlots, of which his response was, you know, it's not ours, we can't, we don't control it, to which he said, probably we'd prefer that it's something that isn't contrary to a hospital, said like a funeral home. So...
For fast food?
Pardon?
Fast food.
Yeah, fast food. A smoke shop. We can go on and on. So, um...
Were there any other questions, or?
I have a question. This was a unique deal in the sense that the former administration cut a deal where the planning commission was kind of bypassed administratively. A lot of these details were ironed out.
Mm-hmm.
Will the outlots fall into that same category, or will we have regular participation in that planning process?
Yeah, so the, the previous administration did enter into that PUD agreement that governs not only the Henry Ford Health System building, but also the outlot. So, that PUD contract stipulates that it's just an administrative review. So, it will not come before the planning commission. Unfortunately.
Could we still have a presentation, at least to be apprised of the progress and what the plans look like?
I think we did make, you know, I was part of one of those initial meetings, and I think we did share with the commission, uh, the initial rendering. So, we have kept you, you know, apprised of where it was going.
I just meant moving forward, now that it's actually seeming like it's moving forward.
The last update we had, it's been a few months ago, but there was a discussion ongoing about green space in the parking lot and capacities, et cetera, et cetera. How'd that end up?
So, we, we are still waiting on plans from them, revised plans. There are still outstanding planning items and engineering items. We're waiting to hear back from MDOT, and maybe Wayne County, too, on, just MDOT, on permits. So...
Didn't Corvo, in a prior presentation, when the question was asked, is, you know, is it overparked, is there too much parking? He said that they think there's not enough. They were worried there's not enough. He said that, not in, not last night, but in a previous, previous presentation.
Yep, so the, the parking on site exceeds what we require by code, by quite a lot. And then from their original, original drawings that they presented to the Administrative Review Committee, they ended up removing some additional green space and adding, I think, another like seventy parking spots or something. So, there is, there is sufficient parking on the site.
And to, and to Laura's credit, the meeting that I attended with her, with the representatives from Henry Ford, I think that we met with them twice, or was it just the one time?
Several times.
Yeah. That, I mean, Laura really worked hard to try to get the parking reduced, but they made it perfectly clear that it's a deal breaker. You know, they want maximum parking, and they pointed out, I forgot, I think it's the one in Novi or West Bloomfield, you know, how much parking, and, and they're kind of overbooked, you know, with parking. She came up with some alternative plans, and then that led into a discussion that they actually bring in a, a portable MRI machine, some big truck. And remember, you were putting the boulevards in, and then they couldn't sw... were putting the boulevards in and then they couldn't swing around. I mean, Laura did work very hard to try to get that green space, uh, you know, made bigger and, but very little progress.
I know a big outstanding item on this is that traffic signal on Ann Arbor Road. They supposedly went through MDOT and got a permit. I talked to the traffic engineer like a couple of days ago and they have never even heard of it. And they furthermore didn't even realize Ann Arbor was there right away until a week and a half ago when I pointed it out as a part of our CSX project.
Which, which traffic signal?
They want to add an additional signal just east of Hagerty Road, which I have a significant amount of concerns with because of the amount of right turns off that. And it's going to be signaled timed at the same time that Hagerty goes north. There's only 500 feet between that signal and that intersection. You have 250 cars that make a right-hand turn in the peak hour. There's no way they're, they're going to stack up into Hagerty Road and you're going to end up with people who can't make a right turn.
They're, they're moving the driveway over to line up with another one across the street. And that was another kind of a bone of contention because that, that is really going to be a mess if they put another signal in.
Are they the definitive authority on that?
Pardon?
M, MDOT would be the definitive authority on that, yeah. So they would be the ones who would allow that signal. And also that signal needs to be in conjunction with re-timing on Hagerty Road, which is not going to happen. You know, they, they say they, they say they will, but you know, according to MDOT, they don't know anything about it.
Every large truck runs that line anyway.
Right.
Laura, do we have any timetable for, uh, the outlot and what they're looking at as far as filings and planning and construction?
No, we, we, we keep in contact with them and, um, check in, but we just haven't seen any revised plans. Um, and so we're not, we're not abreast of who those tenants might be.
That's Grand Sacra, right?
Correct.
They told us it won't be Taco Bell.
Any other things on the, on the monthly report? I have one question, Laura. Do you know, I, I understand there was a fire at the old, uh, Ernesto's Hillside?
Yes.
Do you know how that might impact what, what's planned there and what's, what the progresses of that?
Um, so the, on Monday, the Brownfield Authority had their, um, regular meeting and, uh, the courthouse grill project was discussed. Uh, the state has required, um, from, um, in, in reviewing the Brownfield plan, they've required some additional soil borings, um, which the applicant has not, um, produced yet, uh, Jonah Properties. Um, they, Supervisor Heisey and myself had a call with them last week and they assured us that they are working on that. Um, their timetable, their window is closing, um, every day. Their deadline is, um, I think the second week in January to finalize their development, um, plans with the township. So, um, they have, they have both the Brownfield plan, uh, to finish and, um, just the regular planning process to close out by January. Um... So the ball is really in their court to see how fast they can turn that around. Um, the, the fire at the facility was, um, minor and, um, I don't think it's impacting their timeline. Um, they just need to do, finish the, the work with the state.
I remember the chief made a comment several months ago, that due to the condition of the building, that if there was a fire there, he wouldn't have his, uh, department enter the building. I wonder if that was the case?
Um, from, from my understanding, the, the back of the building is, um, like just pure cinder block and it backs up, I think, to the kitchen, um, which is already like fire suppressed. Uh, this is not my area of expertise, but as I understand, so it, there would have had to been a huge fire in the rear of that building in order for it to actually penetrate and come through. Um, so the location of, uh, the fire that was started, um, wasn't, wasn't going to make a big impact. But if it had been located in the front perhaps, then that would have been a serious issue.
Other questions? If not, is there a motion to receive and file?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Pratt to receive and file the September, uh, Planning and Zoning Report and, and the, uh, continued discussion on residential rear yard and accessory structures.
As we discussed, um, at the September Planning Commission meeting, um, some of the requirements, um, and setbacks for, um, accessory structures, we also talked about residential rear yard setbacks. Um, so on the memorandum, on page three, um, there is a chart that we've prepared, uh, which shows the township's minimum rear yard setback of 50 feet. And that's for all single-family residential districts. And then, uh, there's a listing of comparison communities and the minimum rear yard setback. And, um, you can see that many of them are under the 40 feet or perhaps they start at the 50 feet and then are scaled, uh, depending on the, um, single-family zoning district. Uh, Dearborn in particular, um, is, is scaled not, not per the, um, single-family zoning district, but based on the, um, lot width. Um, and that can be reduced to, uh, 29 feet, which is, um, one of the narrowest. Um, the city of Northville, um, permits 25 feet. So just looking for discussion and, um, any feedback if you think this might warrant, um, consideration of, um, further study and recom, recommendations to, um, the township's existing single-family districts.
Well, from my perspective, um, what, what I think could be done, which is, would be, I think relatively simple, and that is to take the, um, I, I don't, I don't think anything needs to be overcomplicated. The 50 feet seems to me to be excessive. I think you could move that to 40 feet and then simply remove that section of the ordinance, I think it's item BB in the ordinance that says you can't go below 40. Uh, just take that section out. When I looked at, uh, again, as I said, I think last meeting, when I looked at, uh, um, the, uh, the, the surrounding ones that I looked at, I didn't see anything that had any, any restriction like that, thus giving the Zoning Board of Appeals the option, uh, of, uh, of approving a variance, uh, if it seemed reasonable. And quite honestly, that's kind of the way I look at this. It's from, for this portion of it, and I'm not certain where we got the structure discussion, uh, thrown in here, but, uh, from that rear yard setback, this, uh, uh, section of the discussion, seems to me that's, uh, uh, a reasonable, uh, approach.
I, I would tend to agree with, with Bill's assessment. Are you looking for something for us tonight on this or?
I think, um, what will be appropriate is just similar to the, the motion, uh, to the Board of Trustees about the overlay district, um, a similar motion, um, to them to, uh, inform them that we'll be looking at a tax amendment to the rear yard setback, um, in light of the recent ZBA cases.
I'm happy to do that. Do you, are we still talking about these structures as well? I don't know. Do you want to include something there? I don't know what the issue is there. I haven't seen anything in the zoning board like that.
I think the structures is more of just an issue with the building department. Um, and perhaps just a simple definition of what is, um, a roof and what is enclosed into our ordinance would be helpful for them.
So are you, while you, you presented some information before, so where, where are we? Are you going to present anything more? Should we reflect back on what you've already given us or how should we approach that aspect of it?
For the structures?
Yes.
Um, yeah, and we, we can talk about it again if you'd like me to prepare some changes that I think maybe will be beneficial to the building department. They can look it over and see if this is, you know, what would help them. Um, and then we could discuss further.
Yeah, I, I know, uh, well, Mark, I had a discussion with Mark a couple of months ago and then you get into, I mean, he has seen some really unusual cases and he's sort of in a quandary about what to do. And, uh, so talking to him, I guess, and getting a feel of what the issues are that he's run into and then trying to figure out a, a definition that will provide him with more guidance. Because he, he really doesn't, he, he, you know, he doesn't want to go against what's out there now, but he does need guidance.
Well, if, if you would, uh, I think, I think it's appropriate for us to indicate to the Board of Trustees that we, uh, are, are considering, uh, changing the text or get, get, revising, uh, or issuing a tax amendment to, for rear yard setbacks, um, to 40 feet and eliminating the restriction currently in the, uh, residential district for rear yard setbacks, uh, uh, for this, uh, uh, restriction that currently exists, eliminating that, uh, for the 40 feet. And, uh, that, uh, further, uh, explanation, uh, that it might be possible or clarification, uh, on, uh, when the, uh, rear yard setback would apply, uh, in construction of, of roof elements, uh, that are, are attached to the, the, uh, main building.
I don't even know if you need to put in the part about attached to the main building because one of the examples that he gave me is, uh, and I think he talked to you Laura, is some kind of like a pergola thing that was going to be next to a swimming pool. So that's a distance away from the house. So I'm not, you know, that's the aspect that I think we need to think about.
Well, see, that's the part that I don't quite understand myself is where does that restriction come to, to fore? Um, because if it's a standalone, I don't think there is a restriction. A, as an example, I have a pergola on my deck that didn't need a, a permit to be built. Um, it's a, it's all, all wooden pergola. It's not a roof of any kind, but it's a pergola. And, uh, uh, so I, I, I just think clarification might be helpful. And that's what the building department is looking for?
Yeah, maybe something, you know, a notice that we're looking at the 40, you know, the rear yard setback and a definition of accessory structures.
Right.
And just leave it at that.
Okay.
That gives us, so, because I don't want to get into, well, what are you looking at this or looking at that?
I don't, that's what I was, that's what I, where I was headed. I don't want to overcomplicate this thing.
Right, right.
I, I just, you know, we don't want to make too many rules because that, that just doesn't...
You're going to have to interpret them.
Yeah.
Are, are, are we not?
It's not helpful. Go ahead.
Are we going to try and, uh, in, in the case of, uh, an individual, uh, situation where there's unoccupied, uh, common ground that cannot be built on behind them, you know?
Well, see, that's, that's the reason I was, I was, I was, that's the reason I was suggesting what I was suggesting. Cause at that point then, the zoning board has the flexibility of, of looking at the issue and, and allowing for a, a variance. Under the current zoning ordinance, the problem is we don't have that capability. And I think that's, that's an error.
I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah.
When...
So that, so that when we're looking at it, we can say, well, yeah, as an example, this gentleman with, that's on waiver related, backs up to nothing, uh, he could, he could build his thing and be 33 feet. That would be all right. We could allow a variance to that. Now, that wouldn't necessarily mean that, um, uh, that in any, in all cases, that would be acceptable, but we could make that clarification in our...
Okay.
In, in, in our motions on the zoning board.
As long as what we're coming up gives you that flexibility, I'm, I'm all for it.
My point being that I, I don't want to get involved in further describing it and therefore, you know, overcomplicating the issue. That's my thought process.
And putting potentially undue burdens on the homeowner and there's...
Right.
You got to go through a home maze. So I think a motion just letting, you know, the trustees know we're looking at rear yard setbacks and the, and better defining accessory structures.
Sounds good. That's my motion.
Is there support?
Support.
Who supported? You did?
Did we have fun else?
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Dorshevitz, uh, notifying the, uh, Board of Trustees of our intentions on rear yard setbacks and accessory structures. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Is, are there any comments, concerns, questions from the commission?
Well, I, I only had, I was going to ask this question.
Just on you on the record Dennis, I'm opposed.
Oh, oh, on, on the motion? Okay, so let them, let the, uh, Commissioner Ostendorf opposes the last motion.
The, our friend out on Five Mile and Back Road, what's going on with good old? Our friend?
The, the site with the, uh, Taco Bell?
Yes. The Taco Bell, I understand, is open.
It is.
Yeah, it's been for quite some time.
Has it? Well, is there anything else going on with the building in front of the Taco Bell?
I haven't heard any news. Um, they're working with the building department. Um, it seems like it has really slowed down. Um, I know that they submitted for a new sign application, um, to the building department. That's really the extent of it.
Okay. So nothing's happening?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
So anything else?
I move we adjourn.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to, uh, adjourn the meeting at 9:08. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned.